7:01, we'll call the meeting to order. Ken, would you do the roll, please?
Please. Yes, I will. Commissioner Wager.
Here.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Mr. Stender.
Here.
Chair Gerard.
Here.
Thank you. For attending.
All right, if you're able, please join and stand and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is applied by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Before I ask for approval of the agenda, if anyone is here tonight to speak to the landscaping requirements during the public hearing, we will be tabling that. We are not ready to present that data tonight. If you're here to present comments, we will take them during the public hearing, but we will not be having a discussion on the landscaping. We will leave it on the agenda because it was recognized as part of the public hearing. So with that, the chair is looking for a motion to approve the agenda as is or with changes.
I move that we approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. It's a non-abatable motion. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Item five is election of officers. This is an annual event, and the Planning Commission selects who they decide should be chair and vice chair. So it's rotating, and we can go any way you guys want. So with that, the chair is open to a motion for anyone to be chair.
I move that Paul Gerard be chair.
I'll second it.
I further move that Paul Gerard be made chairman by acclamation.
Would you explain what that is?
That means we all just say yes and close the rest of the nominations.
Do I have a second for that?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Aye. Chair is looking for a motion for the vice chair. Nominations are open. Who do we like to see? Chair.
Yeah, my name's Tim Stender. Thanks, Susan.
I have a motion for Tim for being vice chair. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Any other nominees? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Very good. What this means, Tim, is next time you sit there, they kick her down one, and she'll just be ecstatic. All right, so tonight, which is our open forum, we asked if anyone would like to speak to any issue coming for us tonight or in general, please step up, state your name and address for the microphone, and then come on and give us your opinion. So if anyone wishes to come forth, please do so now. Ken, do we have anyone online that wishes to?
No, sir.
All right. Seeing no one come forward, we'll close the open forum part. Item seven, the chair is looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda, which has one item, eight minutes from the regular meeting of January 22, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I would move approval of the consent agenda.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. We'll move to our regular agenda. Item number eight. A is a public hearing for zoning ordinance text amendment regarding maximum density and multifamily, the MF zoning district, ordinance number 749, case file number PZ25-1302. Ken, are you presenting?
I am, Mr. Chair. Thank you. As you introduced, we have received a application request to amend zoning code section 153 323A, which is regarding or in the multiple family zoning district. And the change as proposed would be changing, the requested change was to change the maximum density as outlined or written in that section of the code from 15 units per net acre to 20 units per net acre. The rationale for that change is to make that language consistent with our comprehensive plan. As I noted in the report, in our high-density residential land use category, we say that density is intended to be 15 to 20 units per acre. Thus, these two are inconsistent, and generally, good planning practice is to have your zoning code and your comprehensive plan consistent with each other. So the original request was to just change the 15 units to 20 units per net acre. However, upon further review, specifically by our new C measure, Mr. Stats, he suggested a little different change, and I will read the change. What we're trying, what we want to do is have it as a range. And so it would be in A, where now it says a maximum of 15 units per net acre, it would say multiple dwelling structures with A, and this is the new language, minimum density of 15 units per net acre and a maximum density of 20 units per net acre. So we make it real clear that we're expecting a range of housing density and not necessarily just the top end, because I guess in theory, somebody could come in and propose six or eight units per acre, and that wouldn't really be consistent either. So we are recommending, Planning Commission, hold the public hearing, discuss this, and then we are recommending approval of the ordinance with the change I just read again. It's ordinance number, is it 748 or 749? 749. The ordinance in the packets is 748. It is 749. Again, with the change to say with a minimum density of 15 units per net acre and a maximum density of 20 units per net acre. And with that, I will take questions.
Questions to staff. Susan.
It was published with a single number. Do we need to republish?
No, because I think our hearing notes is say, we're discussing this part of the zoning code, and I think we're smart enough to put in that this is what's proposed, but other changes may occur.
Some of the things that we've been looking at in terms of high-density multi-use were not on the net acreage, but they were on the full acreage as we were doing our calculations. Ken, on a couple of the, we don't have a whole lot of parcels in the city that are high-density residential.
That are vacant.
That are vacant. Of those, what are we looking at in terms of height of these buildings for a net, working on net developable acreage and 20 units per acre?
Well, Madam Chair, or Madam Chair, Ms. Young and the members of the commission, the zoning code allows multiple-family buildings to be four stories or up to 45 feet in height. Probably the closest example, most recent example in my time here is the new apartment building going up down in Headwaters. That's an example of, that's a high-density four-story building.
I'm thinking of the potential for the Shadow Creek having a four, because of the amount of wetlands and the roads, et cetera, et cetera, four to five-story building there. And the look of that as compared to the surrounding area, it's just outside the airport restricted area. I mean, like, just outside.
Out of the cone.
Yeah, just barely.
If I may, Susan, the only way they could have five stories is if they had a lower level that was below ground, safer parking. You could have potentially four stories above grade, but you could not have five stories above grade.
Okay. I like the range. I don't think that any developer is ever going to consider anything less than 20.
Unlikely, but...
But I like the range because it does give us some flexibility with specific locations. And can you help me remember if the southeast corner of Lake and Broadway, as it's being redeveloped, what that would look like as a high-density?
It's in the Broadway District.
Some reason I thought on the map when I was looking.
I believe, I believe that's in the...
Well, that's in our downtown mixed-use district, but I don't know of any zoning district, and I'm going by memory, that allows anything more than four stories.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much.
The only developable parcel here is the one off 202nd and 61. It's left, right? When you look at it?
No, there's a couple more.
But that's the one of most likely, but there might be a couple of smaller ones.
There's a couple more, but they're pretty built out. There might be one more from Menards area, but that's about it.
And there's a couple more on a block back in the long range. If some of that area is redeveloped, then yes, there's more there. I looked at the map tonight.
So, Ken, I have a question for you. You know, your premise here is that according to the comprehensive plan, that it states we should have 20 in the MF, correct?
15 to 20 is the comp plan.
15 to 20.
So the comp plan is, on page 19, states it should be 10 to 15 in the MF. Believe it or not, I actually read it.
I believe you, but I, the language that's on the page one of the report, I pulled right out of the comprehensive plan, so that's why...
Well, this is what throws me for a loss. Now, are we talking different districts? Or, that's my only question. It talks about, it's the one that's on the website. Can you pull that up? I don't know what we can do from up here. It's always scary.
Where would it be? I never look on the website, because of course, I have a copy.
I think it's down the bottom of this one, in the comprehensive plan somewhere on here. Maybe it's under your community. Now, go back to where you were. Yeah, you might have to go into community development. It might be in that one.
Oh, I think it's under zoning maps plans, because it's with plans, yeah.
See if it's in here.
There it is. Comprehensive plan. I heard that says zoning in.
Look at that. What, page around 19, Mr. Chair?
Yes. And since, just so everybody knows who's looking, watching on TV, which is probably nobody, I forgot my notes, so my wife took pictures.
Amending. Which part of the ordinance is it?
Page 19.
Okay, but it makes me jump.
There's a map. Getting closer. All right, so here's, if, Mr. Chair, if you see right here on page 18, where I'm circling, can you see?
Yep.
That's the language where we say the high-density residential land use is 15 to 20 units per acre.
But that's not the district we're talking about. We're talking about the MF.
But that's the zoning code. This is the land use code.
We'll go down to page 19, and you have it here. Where is this? Page 19. Now, I'm not going to be able to find it. Susan, help me out. You always find your stuff.
I know, and I'm trying to...
Can you scroll down a little farther? Well, I'll take your word on it, because...
Again, the high-density here.
It's just a single number in there of 15 on the comp plan. That's why I'm confused, but I'll take your word on it. I'm not going to beat the horse. I'm fine with the change, but I just want to make sure we're consistent is my concern.
Absolutely.
So if I find otherwise tonight when I go home, or tomorrow, I'll email you and say, here's what I was referring to. How's that sound?
You know where to find me.
Yes, and you even reply every now and then.
Yeah, once in a while.
Any other questions to staff?
And so again, just so everyone's clear, this is up here, this is our residential categories in the comp plan, and this high-density residential is what we're referring to and trying to make the zoning code consistent with that.
Since our ordinance already says 15 to 20, and we're making a change to 15 to 20, why do we need to do it?
Well, no, it says a maximum density of 15 units per net acre. It's the current language.
And the zoning code.
And the zoning code. So now we're changing that to almost mirror the zoning code to what's in the comprehensive plan.
Other questions to staff? Since the city's the applicant, does it show like anything they would like to add?
No, I think I've done my part.
This is a public hearing. Way this will work is if anyone would like to speak to this application, we ask you to come up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. Once we have heard from all parties, we will close the public hearing, and we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for decisions. So with that, we'll open the Planning Commission, it's, we'll open the public hearing at 7:18 PM. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Ken, do we have anyone online or anything to be read in?
No, and no.
I'll ask the question one more time. Does anyone wish to speak to this application? Seeing no one come forward, either in the room or online, we will close the public hearing at 7:19 PM. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? And if you're going to make a motion, please remember, on these, we make a recommendation to City Council. We are not the final decision.
I'll move to recommend the City Council adopt the proposed ordinance amending title XV Land Usage, Chapter 153, Section 153.073, Multifamily Residential Districts, Section A.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Any discussion?
Point of clarification is with the recommended change I spoke of earlier?
Oh, with the recommended change.
Thank you.
And the seconders, okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
We'll be plugging this to the council on March 10th, their next meeting.
All righty. Item 8B is a public hearing for zoning ordinance text amendments, case files number PZ25-1293. We're going to have three parts to this. We will have the definition of the ordinance number, the lighting regulations, and the landscaping regulations, which I state we will take comment if anyone wishes to comment, but we are not discussing the landscaping as we are still doing some work on it to prepare it for a public hearing. So with that, I believe, Ken, you're presenting, or, no, I'm sorry.
I'm going to start off, and then we'll turn it over to Claire.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As the commission's well aware, we've been working through zoning ordinance text amendments to try to make it better for the city staff, commissioners, and the public in general. We had a bunch of changes we reviewed back on December 11th with the commission, worked through many of those, but did not get through all of those, and we brought more of those changes back to the commission on January 22nd. Staff received some suggested changes at that meeting, and we are now here tonight to present the latest, our latest work on two sections. Again, the definitions and the lighting standards, and then, as you said, the landscape regulations will come later. So I think the thing, important thing to highlight with the definitions, and just for each item, there's a cover memo that Claire and I put together with the MSA heading, and then there's the actual ordinance in ordinance form, so you know what it'll look like when it goes to the council. We did that for both the definitions and the lighting section, so you could see, if you really cared, how it would look in ordinance format. The definitions, I went through them, Claire went through them, tried to address all the comments and suggestions of the commission. These included, I researched further Washington County regulations, state statutes, and other references to make sure the changes were consistent with state law, current zoning and other land use practices in the area. The changes that, since the last meeting, show up in bold, underlined, and are in yellow, so they hopefully really pop out or easy for you to see, that where new language has been added, other language crossed off, et cetera, et cetera. I guess I'll turn it over to Claire at this point, but I guess if, my thought is, if the commission has certain definitions they want to further discuss, maybe work through it page by page or line by line, or however you wish, but we'll see you. Claire, anything else?
You stole a lot of my thunder. No, just, yeah, please let us know if there's something, just like in the last ordinance discussion you all had, we can still make some amendments to these, especially during the public hearing process, so we're happy to do that. And as noted in Ken's memo, there might be some minor adjustments by the time this goes to the councils. We're still waiting on the city attorney's final feedback and comments on this, so that there might be a few things still slightly subject to change, but we're, if there's anything that we missed, we thought we combed through both of our two notes together with these highlights to make this. Or anything new that's caught your eye, let us know, or, like I said, happy to run through things line by line, but really try to make it clear what's been added or subtracted based on your comments in the way that we posed our memo for tonight's meeting.
Excuse me. Claire, I only have two comments.
Okay.
One is on page 39 of your report. It's non-conforming use.
Uh huh.
It says, see, non-conforming use.
Okay.
But I noticed that down in the ordinance part of it, you have put it in, so I assume you just didn't get it correct.
It just didn't get, yeah, and, okay, that's, but, yes, that is true, because what is in ordinance form is like Ken said, how it would go to the council slash then be published and re-put in your MUNO code or whomever hosts your code. So, but I will certainly make a note of that for my staff report, so that it's all consistent. Thank you.
And then, and my other one had to do with, it's on page 26 of the actual ordinance one.
Okay.
Or page 40 of the report, I believe. It's the first one, water-dependent usage. I'm curious why we have that. It strictly discusses riverfront usage for ships and barges and other stuff. We have the Sunrise River and a couple of just issue ditches. I'm curious why we're adding riverfront commerce definition to our ordinance.
I think that when we, as staff, discussed adding that, I know that it specifies riverfront, and maybe that's something we need to adjust, but with the marinas being mentioned in there in that definition for any sort of like repair or construction, I think staff was trying to relate that to the lakefront uses and maybe didn't catch that river, so we certainly...
I'm fine, as long as we take it to lakefront, then.
Yeah.
Because I'm reading this, I'm going, did we annex Scandia?
Yeah.
The river over there.
We, you know, as we looked through codes that we know have been recently updated that had gone through their definitions, one of those communities was Cottage Grove, which obviously is on the Mississippi, and so that, I'm wondering if that's where we had pulled it and just didn't catch river, so we'll make it more lake-specific. And again, yeah, some of the commerce side of it wasn't the intention either. It was really more marinas and repair, et cetera, that that stuff really should likely be occurring out of the water and at a shop, so.
So if I may, commissioners, I'd like to take the definitions first, and then we'll do the other ones, and then we'll do a public hearing on everything, since it looks like the crowd are just gnawing at the bit down here. So any other comments on the definitions?
I've got a few.
The floor is yours, Susan.
Okay. There are some areas where there's not a space between two words or periods, or, I'm not going to mess with those too much. Just as a style thing, when you're referring to something that has been approved by the city, do you capitalize "city"? Because some places it is and some places it isn't, and I admit, it's a pet peeve that things need to be consistent.
And Ms. Young, are you in the ordinance itself or in the cover memo?
I'm in the cover memo.
Okay.
I'm assuming it was essentially blocked and copied.
You're looking for consistency, I think is what I'm seeing.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
Okay. I think, I mean, just typically, usually the city is capitalized with, throughout the rest of the code, so we'll make sure that all of the Cs are capitalized in the full ordinance form and make it consistent.
On agricultural use, I really liked the addition that the activity does not need to be a principal source to be considered. Thank you for that. Try to have it marked. On the easement, it says the right of a person, entity, government agency, private or public utility, to use public or private land owned by another for a specific purpose. Does, for it to be a true easement, doesn't that easement need to, for it to be a legally enforceable easement, doesn't it need to be documented on the property record? And if so, shouldn't that be included in the definition? And we run into that here all the time.
Versus prescriptive easements?
And it just said, it doesn't say either one, and so my concern is, we use easements here on a regular basis, and I just want to make sure, I believe it should be, the definition should include documentation on property records, but I believe it's probably something for the city attorney to do a final.
Uh huh. Yeah, we can certainly post that question to her.
Yeah, we'll certainly check it.
Yeah.
On seed law, thank you again for the equestrian facility and definition of farms. Since we, on farms, since we've removed the need for it to be primary, we define it on things that are income-producing, such as cash crops, reading or breeding of poultry I'm wondering if deleting the word "cash" from that definition would remove it so that it is not a strictly income-producing basis to be a farm. would remove it so that it is not a strictly income-producing basis to be a farm.
Hopefully if you're raising crops that are for cash, but not necessarily.
Well, I, I have a farm, but I'm not selling a whole lot. It's, it's.
Are you collecting cash?
It's for my, for my own purposes. What I raise there is, is what I use for my own purposes. I'm not selling those things.
Right. Well, and the, the first line of that sentence, attractive land which is principally used for agricultural, doesn't mean exclusively used. I don't know if we got wiggled from there.
Principally means that most of the property is essentially income-producing.
We'll check it.
Thank you.
Yep.
My next one is down on page 10, home occupation. As you read that definition, it, it's not, not like the other definitions. So I'm proposing that that be reworded to say home occupation, commercial activities which are clearly secondary to the primary use of the structure as a residential dwelling, and which are a portion of a dwelling or attached accessory building on the same lot. In other words, everything else we've got defined as the thing, not a use. And so this is, home occupation is a thing. And so keeping the words, but rearranging them so that it would say.
Could you read that again for us?
Commercial activities which are clearly secondary to the primary use of the structure as a residential dwelling, and, and uses a portion of a dwelling or an attached accessory building on the same lot.
Now, would that also include hobbies that you sell stuff as well?
Yep. Those are home occupations.
Hobbies in there, or does it?
No, it's just the activity, it's not.
Okay.
It could say acti, yeah.
Did she get all that?
No.
So, so will you read that one more time?
I certainly can, because, because I had to play with it and it's, I would give you the paper, but you probably couldn't read it.
Okay.
Okay.
So it's.
Home occupation.
Yeah.
Commercial activities which are clearly secondary to the primary use of the structure as a residential dwelling, and use a portion of a dwelling or an attached accessory building on the same lot.
Better? I like it.
And you can always replay it live on tape.
We may have to.
But yeah, well, we'll make that change.
And I'll, I'll give you this, if, if you think y'all can read it, that's not a problem.
I think Claire's okay on that. She can't read her own note.
I know, I'm like, oh.
On manufactured home park? In other cities, there are manufactured home parks on which the, you, you own the home, but you also, it's more like condominium sort of thing, where you also own the land underneath. So those would be prohibited here?
I, I've never heard of one that you actually buy the lot that you put the home on. I've always considered them to be for rentals. Because you're, you're renting the lot, you own the home. And then when, I've never heard of the version you speak of.
Sort of like the condominiums downtown, but flat.
I don't think we're gonna have a big problem with this because I don't expect we're gonna have more in Forest Lake.
Then under manufacturing, again, this is a personal thing. I really hate using the word that we're defining as part of the definition. So I would, I would recommend that we say manufacturing, a use engaged in the making predominantly from previously prepared, da-da-da-da-da. And then under manufacturing light, the making of products. So that we're not using the word that we're defining as the definition. On the musa, do we need to put a timeline in there? I can see someday that some of the land east of 61 that we do not predict will be in the 20-year musa could be someday. But when we say are or will be available, I'm wondering if there needs to be some sort of a time in there.
But I, it goes on to say, and is identified in the city's comprehensive plan.
Okay.
And so each company, the plan gets updated every 10 years. And that will be kind of our time guideline.
Thank you. Motor vehicle fuel station? Does Holiday have to stop selling food?
No, because it comes under, so they have two different definitions. They're, they would be.
They're a convenience.
Motor vehicle convenience store. The one above it. So they have the convenience store, which is like the QuickTrip, Holiday, Supermare Speedway nowadays. And then you got the service garages, I think is what we're handling here.
Yep.
Of which currently, I don't believe Forest Lake has one.
Yeah.
The last one we had was the BP, which is now Starbucks.
And.
I think.
And I don't think I, I see them anywhere anymore.
They're pretty rare.
Okay, cool.
Yeah, I actually think this, I don't know.
They're either convenience stores or they're just straight repair shops. There's very few that are fuel sales and repair shops together.
The Shell used to have two bays in it, right downtown.
Make more money selling candy bars.
Made them a convenience store.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for the definition of pasture areas. As we get more folks that are, are moving out to the country and don't realize the concept of animal units per acre, I think that that is, that's going to be very helpful to us. On prime farmland? Could we tie that, since we tie, tie many of our other definitions to county or state or, or federal definitions, would it be possible to tie that to the USDA definition of prime farmland, which also includes things like frequency of flooding and the water table and wind erodibility in their definition? And I think it's section 622.04 of, I think it's the portion of the US code that's under USDA.
We can certainly look at that. I learned a lot by just doing the research I did and adding these things. I'm a city boy, so that was good stuff.
It, it, but the USDA definition is pretty widely accepted.
And I don't remember if I get this from state records or Washington County, but we'll look at it.
I know that most of the, the public waters definition, it's, it says all, no, I think we're good, never mind. I was getting at, at our piping and personal wells, but I think we're good on that. Recyclable, recyclable materials? You've added composting in there. But you did not include the materials like food and vegetative matter in your listing of the materials that it's limited to. And none of the things that are listed, except cardboard, can be composted. So I would suggest that if we're going to list things, you would include food and vegetative matter? And since there is.
Wouldn't vegetation, vegetative matter be under composting? I know food waste and the food waste pickup now is a thing.
But, but see, you, you, you said for the purpose of recycling or composting. You added the term, the words composting in there. And so.
Should we just pull that then, the two words?
Washington County has added the composting to the recyclable materials. I mean, that they consider that, it's considered recycling now.
Well, we can't add it to the can.
No, but you don't.
It's a reuse of a material.
Right. And I'd also suggest fabric in there because there are now finally again markets. if you have composting and you're going to list the specific items, then you need to add the compostable materials.
Would, if I may, in the second sentence where it says for the purpose of this chapter, these materials are limited to, if we changed it to say these materials may include but are not limited to?
That would be wonderful.
Because the list is always going to change.
Yes, it is.
Okay, we'll do that. May include, but are not.
First, it's all plastics, they're not recyclable. But, you know, the, it's, people think of them as.
It's wiscycling instead of recycling.
You're a pro. There aren't many folks that know that term. Go.
We dropped inexpensive from the.
I saw that. I love the definition of sign. Paul, are you okay with that one?
Something tells me that. We may have to come back to that one when we do the sign ordinance.
Correct.
Yes.
Um, hey, it's, it's complete. I mean, it's, it's complete.
Attention getting devices.
Graphics painted on or attached to windows. See, it says exclamation signs and then.
Or on persons, animals, or vehicles.
Well, I think when we actually get into the sign ordinance and say, what are we going to allow and not allow, we'll change this definition.
Okay. Then you're going to need to do another public hearing because you're going to be changing the ordinance again.
Well, we'll be, if we update the sign ordinance, we'll be changing.
Okay. You don't like snakes and amphibians in veterinary small animal clinics?
We were trying to def, to break those out between the small and the large.
If you can carry it in, it's a small animal.
That works for me.
If you can ride it in, it's a large.
Kind of like, again, I'm a city boy.
And that's the extent, and, and you all listened really, really well. And I realize that, that this is an enormous task. And I appreciate the work that went into it.
Thank you. I think Jessica may have had a couple of these.
I have one thing, kind of. On the, what page is that? We have a definition for condominium. And then that's also under dwellings? And we moved accessory apartment to just being under dwellings? Do we want to move condominium under there? Just leave it there? That'd be page 19 on the whole.
Five and six of your cover memo.
I, I mean, I think we certainly could move it under dwelling like we did accessory apartment.
Well, yeah, and under dwelling, there's all sorts of things that are listed duplexes.
And the condominium is letter B under there.
Yeah.
Right under multifamily dwelling.
3B is condominium.
Yeah.
So question is, do we need both?
They are slightly different, not, I mean.
Because one thing you can have is you can have commercial industrial condominiums, selling, storage.
Like a garage condo?
Yeah.
But are those typically defined under outdoor storage? I've never permitted one.
I don't think so. Or are you, yeah.
Because outdoor storage usually specifies rental, you know, common ownership with a rental of the space, sure. Whereas owner condos, yeah, they own those parcels and.
So it may be important, because the condominium definition covers any kind of real estate where the one, two pages later is specifically for residential condominiums.
Okay.
If we're comfortable keeping them separate, I would recommend that.
And that way, if we were to have a condominium mobile home park, it would still be in the definition.
Yes, that's correct. Yes, because the one under dwelling, I guess, yeah, does specify residential dwelling, whereas condominium doesn't specify residential, so.
Any other comments, questions?
Anybody else comments? We will move from the definition portion to the lighting portion. And who is doing that?
We'll let Claire take that.
Yes.
Welcome, Claire. We appreciate you being here once again.
Thank you, and I appreciate all of the work that the commission has done on these amendments so far and working with us through all these long agendas and packets. So the lighting amendments that you have before you this evening is a, similar to what, and we briefly talked about this the last time I was here in December, but we kind of focused a little more on landscaping just because there was some more actual text amendments that we need to work on. Lighting wise, at least from what staff gathered from the discussion, we are recommending removing the lighting subsections within those minimum design standards with B3, BP, and C. Moving all of that, referencing the general city lighting ordinance and moving those specific requirements into the lighting ordinance. And I tried to lay that out within my staff memo. The first couple pages shows where it was existing in the lighting, or, excuse me, in the district standards. Uh, yes, section 153.074, I think, to maybe 085 is about how far did that goes? And then we would be moving that language and not changing any of the text, just moving it to the lighting section of 153, 130, which starts on page 72 of your packet, and I think the memo is page four. Adding a new section that says additional performance standards for NC, B1, B2, B3, BP, and I, because they were all saying the exact same thing in five different sections of the code. Removing that to lighting, where lighting lives already. People will, developers, residents, et cetera, will already be looking there for whatever they need to show in their lighting plans, et cetera. And then additional performance standards for MU1 and MU2 as those were slightly different wording than the NC, B1, B2, et cetera. But those two were also the same. So we added a section within there, again, not proposing any text changes other than a couple wording switches of things that say like, back in the old sections, you know, the B3 district must follow the lighting requirements presented in the city's lighting ordinance. So that, those are the text changes, not actually, nothing content related. We're not changing any of the performance standards at this time, although we did receive one. We're not changing any of the performance standards at this time, although we did receive one, a comment from city administrator about what the part that Ken has up here on the screen, three A and four A. The decorative style lighting, a maximum of fourteen feet in height shall be used to illuminate all site areas with the exception of parking. Since we're already looking to move this language and amend it, he was concerned that this language might add some confusion as to if we were meaning every other part of the area has to be fully lit? Or does it mean in areas other than parking, or parking areas are allowed of fourteen foot or higher, but the rest of the site can't have anything fourteen feet? And so, we, staff has come up with a different language here that might clarify that, and so what we'd be recommending, and again, this was just sent to us a few days ago, that's why it's not updated in your packet, is, would be decorative style lighting fixtures may be used throughout the site, but must not exceed fourteen feet in height, except in parking areas where taller fixtures are permitted.
Works for me.
So.
So, that would be three A and four A.
Three A and four A, yeah, would amend to that updated language. And then again, we'd propose that the earlier sections of chapter one fifty-three, we'd remove all of the, this language from that. Guide people to the lighting ordinance for any, yeah, any standards. Because it was saying the same thing multiple different times in a spot of the code. That really just didn't make a lot of sense when lighting lives somewhere else, so.
So, again, to be clear, the concern with three A and four A here is one could read that and say, well, does that mean I got to light everything? And that's not the intention. Wanting to make it more clearer, hopefully clearer that where you're going to do lighting, here's how you do it.
Do you define shoebox style lighting anywhere?
I don't think we do define it.
And, may I make that suggestion, please?
Yeah, absolutely. I don't even know what shoebox style, uh, let's see. Oh, it's, looks like it's kind of like what you see in parking areas. But yes, we can certainly add a definition.
We talk about it so much, I just wanted to be clear what we're.
It, it might be one of the, you know, a lot of updated codes that have graphics or pictures. It might be something where we show up just a graphic of what, what we mean by shoebox lighting because from that quick Google search, they all looked pretty similar. So, yeah, but we'll add that into definitions, that's a great point.
I, I didn't know if Claire had anything else she was presenting.
Uh, no, that's it for, that's, that's what we have here for your consideration this evening is the amendments to those earlier sections with the removal of that language. But notwithstanding that, the language is elsewhere in the code. We're not complete, we're just removing it from those sections.
Shifting.
Shifting, yes. So, that, that's what we have for your consideration on the lighting changes.
So, my only comment, and then I'll turn it over to Susan because I'm sure she's got something. And in the ordinance, we're on page seventy-five of the report. Section one. Under the amendment. I'll let you get there. We're up top here.
In the report.
Section one.
Section one amendment, yeah.
Right there. All right. First paragraph, we talk about applicable for the NC, B one, and B two. We scroll down under three and four, we got the NC and the B one, but five, or it's labeled as two, is the B three.
Should this be five?
No, that needs to move to section four. Or to the next section. Uh, which is.
Because there's the B three here.
Because this is where B three is supposed to be.
So, I also had that thought when I was making this amendment for the packet. And it's not correct in the ordinance right now. So, if as part of this process, we want to move that, we can. But it's actually incorrect currently in the code.
I was wondering why I didn't make my changes the last time. Because we're missing B two.
Correct, and it's not, there isn't, yeah, it's, it, because I, I spent about a half hour with all of my screens up making sure that I wasn't missing something. But that's absolutely something we can address as part of this amendment.
Because we do cover B two then.
Because we, yeah, we cover B two down in the new language, yes. So.
I would, it just seems to me that this is the time to line it all up.
I agree, yes.
And I don't think there's a whole lot of difference for what the B two is. You know, we're looking at the Broadway area and.
Primary, primarily. The Broadway corridor is the biggest.
Yeah, and limited industrial and highway businesses to B two.
Yep.
So, they're, they're all pretty similar. So, I, I personally, my vote is to clean it all up now.
Yeah.
And these are the things that we don't necessarily check as a staff because we've read it sixteen times.
Well, it's one of these things that I'm reading through and I go, you know, I thought there was something else I was supposed to be reading. If I don't read it late at night, I'm actually fairly sharp. Contrary to what's been, you've been told.
Yeah, I have a note on that, yeah. So, we'll make sure that it's all in line for moving forward with B two, B three, within the labels.
Especially with what will be in the ordinance that will get adopted.
Yes.
Susan?
Just because I live in a house that never was inspected. Section one fifty-three point one three O, lighting regulations. We're down there to C one. All outdoor lighting fixtures lawfully existing and legally installed prior, are exempt from the regulations.
Where, one fifty-three?
It, it says, uh, C one.
Oh, not, so it's a nonconforming use?
Yeah. That's really, 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 really broad. And a little bit scary. But if the city attorney is cool with it, then I guess I, I am too.
And again, that's our existing language that we were not proposing changes, doesn't mean.
Right, and I, and I get that, but what he said.
Right.
About cleanup.
Sure.
That's a good one to clean up.
That's because I'm the chair.
So, this is actually very common lighting, nonconforming use language from my experience working in some other communities. Now, I'm not a lighting expert and there are, you know, when we do full lighting amendments, I bring in like our electrical engineers and people that look at photometrics, all that fun stuff. But this is not uncommon language. I'm not saying we can't look into addressing it, but Forest Lake is not the only city with this language.
I get that, but if they jump off the bridge, that doesn't mean that I'm going to jump off the bridge too.
I, I, yes, I agree, I just, I was.
So, I, I just, I just want perhaps the city attorney to be happy with that one.
Sure.
As I'm trying to figure out how, how I would comply with some of these things. Business, commercial, and mixed use two, and then we go down to E. On outdoor lighting for parking lots serving commercial industrial businesses. If I've got a car lot, the lighting that I use during business hours when it's dark outside is pretty much the same that I would use for security. How is that different? And should it be?
You know, a lot of the LEDs being installed in lots today are two levels. They have a low level for nighttime, if there's no one out there. And if someone comes through, they have a motion sensor on and kicks them up on the high.
Okay, cool.
That's what we were installing and we abutted a residential district. Of course, it's kind of wild. It looks just like in the movies when you drive down and all the lights go on.
Right.
If you ever park at the airport, they have that kind of lighting in the terminal lot. As you drive down, they all turn on.
Oh.
Okay.
We have it in the hallways here.
I don't get out much.
Is that something we want to require?
The challenge will be is the actual implementation and then enforcement.
I get that.
Because we don't have the lighting police are going to drive around at nine o'clock at night and see what their lights are doing.
You can say that about almost everything in our zoning code.
Correct.
Because.
We don't necessarily want to pile on more, but yes.
Right.
Could we just put in there that a lower level lighting is acceptable at night?
Is encouraged.
Acceptable or required?
Encouraged or required?
Required, encouraged.
Which, which section would that be added into?
It would be, it would be in that E. The use of outdoor light, the outdoor. Outdoor lighting that serves businesses that do not operate after dark must be turned off one hour after closing, except for approved security lighting. And, and what I'm saying is that for a lot of these places, right now, their business lighting is their security lighting and it's bright.
So, could you put in there like example, like dimming the lights? And after closing?
Or reduced.
Walmart turns, I know, turns some of them off.
They reduce.
The most prime examples of these would be the car dealerships and what do they do? And I, I don't know. Yeah, I'm sure there's some lights on, but I don't know if they dim them down or if they automatically set back on a timer or on the motion detectors or how they do that.
Staff probably has a, a better way of saying this, but I, I, there's got to be a better way.
So, it'd be in three in the second sentence, try to add some words in about setting them back or to a lower setting or dim them down or something.
Three, or is it here in two where it talks about? Two E, business, commercial, mixed use, industrial?
I was looking at the hours in E.
Yeah, that's E.
Two E.
Yeah, that, I thought, I'm sorry, I thought you said three.
Second sentence in two E is.
Yep.
Does the city enforce this right at this point?
We work on a complete basis and then.
Yeah, that's a great answer.
Yeah, I know.
Claire, what have you seen?
For the hours. I mean, Susan makes a good point that security lighting is likely also going to be now. Maybe it's something that just the lights along the build, like approved security lighting, you know, maybe when they've submitted their, and go through their site plan review process, it's just determined. Yeah, the ones here around your building that are downward facing, they're not going to jut out into your neighbors and they're not going to be super visible from the street. You know, I'm thinking of a really large property that has parking lot style lighting and then their own lighting on the building. I think lighting on the building for, for that security, for cameras, et cetera. Not that stuff can't happen in your parking lot, I get that too. But that's what's going to cause, I think, you know, when it, when you think about zoning and why it was likely written this way is aesthetics and compatibility with the surrounding areas in the neighborhood. So, maybe it's also something that's looked at. I mean, this does specify commercial and industrial businesses. So, that's likely already, you know, gathered in a similar area surrounding other uses that is, you know, like that. But I would say that I would also probably argue or know, then in meetings where a business owner would argue what Susan's point has been of, well, that's my, that's my security lighting. I don't want vandal, vandals, you know, hanging around. If there's, if it's lit, they're less likely to be attracted to my site while I'm not there, while I'm closed, you know? So. That's, it's hard, it's hard.
I like the concept of the, the brighter motion detected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Or you could allow a limit on lumens, you know, that at night, you can't be at your full brightness after a certain amount of hours, right? You can be at a percentage of your full lit or a specification that it has to be downcast lighting. It has to be directional, down, directional away from the street or your neighbors or, and that's like, that's already in here as a regulation anyways. But if you wanted to kind of specify what that security lighting might look like, that, you know, that could be an option, be a little more descriptive there.
Would, would it help after the word lighting in the second sentence, just add in something with reduced lumens or intensity or something?
Yes.
I don't know if we even specify.
A specific number, just.
Fifty percent or something.
Right.
Or on a motion detector system or, or motion, motion activated or.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else, Susan?
No, sir.
I, I hate to poke the bear, but I have one thought. Right below this, I was reading this again today. H that's on the screen.
Yeah.
All new light fixtures must use LED technology unless otherwise approved by the city council. First of all, I don't think the city council would ever approve anything different. I don't know that we would ever take a request to not have LED lighting to the council. I suppose someone could ask, seems unlikely. But more importantly, what I brought to Claire earlier today is LED technology is the current best technology for lighting, as I understand it. Five or ten years from now, there might be a different type of lighting that's even better. So, we've got a specific term there that if somebody's really reading the code down to every little last word, they're going to say, well, we have to use LED and five or ten years from now, it might be something different or better. So, I don't know if we need to add some language in there after LED technologies that says something of the effect of are the best available technology or best, I.
Current technology.
So, I throw that out for discussion.
Are there high lumen, low power? So, or similar? High lumen, low power, that's the advantage of LED, right? It's, it's high lumen with low power.
But when I read that, I thought, I thought back to what we're trying to, anytime we reference state statutes, we don't give the specific state statute number because we just say as in state statutes because those state statute numbers change. And then our zoning code, we, is, are we, are we boxing ourselves in? Or do we let the next plan, set of planning commissioners and staff worry about when the next best lighting technology comes along to change this part of the code?
We frequently use the term best practice.
True.
And I think that we could say all new light fixtures must use best practices as.
As defined by.
For energy efficiency, because that's the point of this, is the energy efficiency.
Yes.
Yeah, so maybe that's how you connect it. Or you could say the high lumen, low power and then have such as LED. That doesn't mean you can only use that, but we could have an example. Or best practices such as LED, I, you know, that's an option.
You guys got the juice.
We're, we're doing lots of head dotting with the, the best practice for high lumen, low energy such as LED. We're all, we're all doing the bobble hook here.
Yeah, and I think that would, you know, it's okay to have an example in there. That doesn't mean it's the only thing you can utilize. It's likely what's going to come forward in the next, like we said, in this, for, for, I'm not an electrical engineer, so don't ask me. Yeah.
Okay, so we're going to add that in.
Uh huh, yeah, we'll amend.
Now that I brought that up.
Commissioners, any other comments?
I had a question here on two B, on page seventy-three of our packet. It says.
Intensity?
Intensity, no light source or combination thereof will cast light on a public street. Intensity, no light source or combination thereof will cast light on a public street shall exceed one foot candle meter reading. Does that mean all lighting or can the city or state put up streetlights that are brighter than that?
This is lighting that's privately installed.
Oh, privately, okay.
That would encroach onto a public street.
Yeah, that's, it's, we don't get to regulate the state or the city on their lighting.
Do as I say, not as I do.
Okay.
Well, the, the streetlights on the street are gonna have different needs and requirements than parking lot lighting that might spill into or over into a street.
Now, would you allow temporary lighting, like if they were having events? Or would that be covered somewhere else?
I think we, I would think we'd have that covered somewhere else, but I couldn't tell you where.
Yeah, I mean, I know there's temporary holiday lighting, you know, that's allowed in the sign, um, but I don't know if there's special, I'm not seeing anything for like special like construction, let's say, lighting that might be a little brighter and into the evening.
Well, you know, emergency lighting, you could, you can have that as bright as you want. Not if there's a four car pileup and they need to bring out lighting to-
Or we're not gonna get in the way of public safety.
No.
That's against the zoning code.
The light police won't be out, the other police will.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other comments? This is a public hearing. If you wish to speak to this issue of both our definitions and lighting or give comments on landscaping which we didn't cover, you're more than welcome. Again, we ask you step up to the lectern, state your name and address for the record. Spend a couple of minutes giving you our thoughts and then once we've heard from everyone, we will close the public hearing and bring it back for recommendations from the planning commission. So at that, we'll open the public hearing at eight thirteen PM. Does anyone wish to speak to these applications? Ken, do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
We'll wait a few seconds to see if they come running in from the hallway, if they just got the notice now. I'll ask one more time, does anyone wish to speak to these applications? And Ken, I assume there's nothing to be read into the minutes either?
No, we touched on earlier what the city administrator talked about.
All right. See, no one come forth, we'll close the public hearing at eight fourteen PM. Commissioners, what's your pleasure? And just so you know, we again are making recommendations and I'll need a, we're gonna need three motions tonight. One for the definitions, and by the way, the ordinance is on page forty-two of your packet if you want that. The lighting one is on page seventy-five. Once those two are complete, we will make a motion to table the landscaping.
I will make a motion that we recommend ordinance amendment titled E five, chapter one fifty-three, section one five-three dot zero one zero regarding the amendments to the definitions.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, any discussion?
Plan of clarification? Is that with the changes in discussion that we had earlier?
Tim?
Yes.
Yes.
I don't wanna assume anything, but for the record, thank you.
Thanks for keeping us on a straight and narrow. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by the saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
I'll make a motion that we accept ordinance amending title XV, chapter one fifty-three, section one fifty-three, zero seven four, one fifty-three point zero eight zero, one fifty-three zero eight four, one fifty-three zero eight five, and one fifty-three point one three zero pertaining to the lighting regulations as well as the discussed changes.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor, signal by the saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions, motion carries. Before I make a motion, typically when we do a table, we have a comeback date. Do you have one for us or?
We are shooting for four weeks from tonight. The second meeting in March.
I'll make a motion to table the landscaping section of the ordinance until the second planning commission meeting of March.
Second?
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-abatable motion, all those in favor, signal by the saying aye.
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 Opposed, abstentions, motion carries.
Thank you all, good work.
All right, thank you Claire for coming this evening.
Absolutely, thank you for your hard work on this.
Our pleasure, probably get paid the big bucks.
Yeah.
Ken, do you have anything up for discussion tonight?
Uh, no, a couple of updates, but nothing on discussion.
All right, I'll come right back to you on the updates. We have our esteemed councilperson here tonight, Mr. Larson, anything you'd like to add today?
Esteemed, very, very well said, sir. Good evening, chairman and commissioners. Just a, a couple of quick things, from the last meeting that we had on the city council on the twenty-seventh of January, we heard from the serene concept plan that you guys made recommendations or whatnot on that. The council looked at that and agreed with your suggestions and things and moved forward with that concept plan. The other one, the Shalaika?
Shleba.
Shleba, thank you, sir. That concept plan, again, you guys had made several comments to him as far as what his lot size is and things like that went, again, the council agreed with your recommendations on some of that stuff. And also the engineer had made comments that there is a little B, there are some utility issues also with that property too, so. They just made some suggestions to them and I think they're gonna go back and review their stuff maybe for another shot at things, so. That's the two things that stood out here for our meeting.
Thank you, any questions to the council?
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Do you wanna report on last night's meeting, or Monday night's meeting? The North Shore Trail on?
Yeah, on Monday's meeting, the North Shore Trail, we had a workshop and it was very well attended and a lot of people shared a lot of interest in a bike or walking trail in the area of North Shore, running along through. Our concerns were if it came down through North Shore, probably not to continue past two thirty-fifth street. So the city engineer also brought some plans and stuff to and showed us a area down two thirty-fifth and how it wind through and come out like Kiwatin or an area out that way. There's just some budget concerns in that area. And I'm sure Ken could maybe address some of that stuff as well.
So to back up the, what started this, there's a maintenance project proposed for North Shore Trail, basically all the way around the lake. And that was just, as I understand, replacing the pavement, replacing the culverts. No change of the ditches, no adding a trail, that kind of thing. There are several residents in along North Shore or near North Shore Trail that think there should be some kind of pedestrian way or bike path or both along the road because it's narrow and twisting and those kind of things, but looking at it, it's what, six or eight million dollars to add a trail, it's a ton of money. And then you're redoing the ditches, you're redoing the drainage, you're moving, you're probably removing trees, you're moving more power poles, now you're dealing with the watershed district on stormwater management. Certainly, anything can be done, anything can be engineered, but it's not in the budget, as I understand it, is that a fair summary?
That's correct, that, and they're probably gonna be, if, one way or another, they will probably be taking some of your property on North Shore Trail to develop that due to the ditching area and stuff like that, so they would probably acquire some of your property and what they would have to move some things too. So phone poles, your mailboxes, your, some of your culverts and stuff like that, so.
That used to be a county road and so it should have had a wider right of way along its entire length than a typical city street.
No. I live on North Shore, no.
They, they didn't do that though. Yeah, unfortunately.
So my property line is probably fifteen feet from the edge of the pavement.
Which is a pretty standard boulevard.
Yeah.
And, and a lot of sea, and a lot of streets, but I think there are places where there might be a five foot boulevard.
Well, eh, there are places on North Shore that are on private property.
Yeah.
That I knew.
Yeah.
Lot of them.
Just with wetlands and, and things like that, some of that area is just, I don't know, it, it's, it's, would be kinda hard to conceive trying to do some of that with all that goes into it. So I think at this point, we're just kinda like tabling it until we get some more information and things like that on things, so there'll be more forthcoming, I think as far as staff updates and the en, city engineer and stuff like that.
When you live on a street, it is a normal expectation that you should be able to walk on the shoulder or the side of the street without taking your life in your hands. And in North Shore Trail, that's not possible.
No, yeah, there's people out, well, today, it's a nice day out and there's some people out walking their dog and I was kinda peering out my front door just, and people are zigging by there, it's thirty miles an hour in that area and I know the electronic sign down there is getting a workout because that thing just constantly is flashing at them, so. But, um, we'll see how it goes, it's gonna take some more progression, I think, from the city engineer and maybe some more input from the public. So, but again, budget dollars are also, is always a topic of discussion.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you kindly, folks.
Couple of other things if I may.
Yes, sir.
You're all aware of the training tomorrow night starts at five thirty, be upstairs. Community room, maybe a little light supper will be provided. Couple hours primarily, primarily led by our city attorney about roles and responsibilities, do's and don'ts, is both council members, commission members, staff members and how we can all work together to stay legal and play nice together in the sandbox.
The key part being stay legal.
Absolutely. Our newest city administrator started, Mark Statz, last, huh? Stotz, thank you. Week ago yesterday on the seventeenth and, in fact, yeah, some of his comments were what we brought up tonight. So he is reading our planning commission materials, which is good, he's getting up to speed on that. I, I just was reading, I just got a little information today, I just kept accidentally, I wasn't initially looking for it. I think you all, all should be aware that Highway ninety-seven is going to get reconstructed. That really is going to happen. There's gonna be an open house coming up in next week or the week after here in March to talk about it, but it's gonna be done in two phases with the west end down by Hornsby and Loves to Everton. That'll be done in twenty twenty-five and then from Everton to the roundabout by Highway sixty-one will be done in twenty twenty-six. And as I understand it, the west end, when they do that, that road will be completely shut down because it's fifteen or twenty feet of muck that have to come out and they can't keep traffic going while doing the construction. I don't know the exact start date, but it'll be coming.
The information session is Tuesday, March eleventh from four to six here, or upstairs or?
Yeah, so if anyone wants to know. We will have a meeting in two weeks. We've got another concept plan to look at and then a site plan revision for QuickTrip. They wanna add more parking because they're very busy.
Where?
The backside, they own the whole property. So on the east side of their existing building.
That place is packed all the time.
So that's, that and more Hidden Creek, future phases in a concept plan. They're going great guns out there. That is all I have, unless you have other questions for me.
Questions for Ken? Claire, do you have anything to add?
I don't think so, we're just working on those final kind of, um, you know, what we had remaining for the landscape plan that was why we tabled it and it'll be coming back to you was to really look at the plant unit definitions and how that was gonna be calculated, uh, since that was you know, a primary discussion with the commission was we get these concept plans all the time and they can't meet our minimum requirements when we use the perimeter calculation. We had come up with some others, they still aren't mathing super great, so we're still trying to find that best formula, we'll call it.
Kind of that sweet spot of requiring plantings but not being so ridiculous that they can't possibly meet our minimum numbers.
And then taking it back too much that they only have to plant like three trees. So trying to come up with that sweet spot like Ken said, so. That's what you can expect in a month, I mean, the rest of the ordinance, but that is the main delay on that.
Will we see other parts of the ordinance at the same meeting?
I don't think so, we haven't really s-
We haven't had our next staff meeting to discuss the next stuff as to what-
What we'll tackle next. It's a good question.
It's a great question.
Well, you know, I told Abby that, one of the reasons I re-upped for the last three years was to push this ordinance through.
Yep.
Ken?
Believe it, we're pushing.
All right, thank you Claire for coming this evening.
Thank you.
Tim?
I have nothing.
Susan?
None.
Jessie?
Nothing.
I have nothing, so with that, the chair is looking for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, it's a non-abatable motion, all those in favor, signal by the saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Thank you very much for attending tonight, see you all tomorrow.